I want to be consider everybody's time that's here on time, so we'll get started. My name is Robert Queen, I volunteer to help moderate the meeting. I'm not professional at this, it'll take you about thirty seconds to figure that out, but I'm one of y'all, I'm a concerned parent and taxpayer from down in the Crest district, so I guess for full disclosure, I am a Crest alumni, but I guess Crest and Murch are kind of like kissing cousins, now that we've merged our school system, so we're, I feel like we're on the same side now instead of opposition, so I'll leave that right there, that's my only editorial for tonight, maybe, for right now. Before we start, I could ask Ms. Davis if you would have a quick prayer for us.
I'm George Davis, I'm up there at Town Council, and I'm so glad to see all this crowd out tonight. Our mayor is Rick Barker, he's here, if he wants to say anything.
Well, how do you get out of here?
I'd be awfully happy to tell him it's good to see as many parents interested in what's going on in our schools. A former member of the school board back in the nineties, so I know what he's supposed to say to me. Let's all bow our heads, please. Father, thank you so much for allowing us to be able to come together tonight to discuss our problems with our schools, and thank you, Lord, for letting so many interested parents come out. Be with all of us tonight as we try to get some matters settled, while we give our opinions about what we need in the schools. Help us to understand that we need to be very careful about what we say and how we say it. Now, hope it is serious need and bless all of us that are here, for we ask in thy name, amen.
I do have some guidelines I'd like to go over before we get started, just to kind of keep, I don't expect any problems, you guys look like a good group and all that, but this is what we did, our first town hall meeting, so just to be all of the same page and kind of know where we're headed. This town hall meeting was organized by concerned citizens, it's not sponsored by the Cleveland County School Board of Education, any political party group, any business group, or any religious organization. We're having this to provide a forum for teachers, students, parents, administrators, the general public, to express their praises and concerns regarding Cleveland County schools. Minutes will be taken and a final report written and consolidate all comments, and it will report that on to the school board, school board and superintendent. And the overall goal of all of this is to improve the educational environment for the students and the working environment for our teachers. If you're interested in making some comments tonight, we could have a sign-in sheet, I think we've got five or six on there right now, anybody else would like to sign up, I could pass the clipboard. Just to pass that around, if anyone else would like to sign up, do that, and we'll just, we'll order them to sign that. At the last town hall, we did three minutes' time, that seemed to be a little bit short for folks, and we'll do four minutes tonight. I do have a timer on my iPad, just got a big, gonna make a big red circle for four minutes, and it'll dingaling at you when it gets to four minutes, so, so I don't have to be the bad guy and ask you to sit down, please, when it's dingaling, just, you know, wrap it up and go ahead and sit down, when, when the other folks have a chance to speak, if you want more time, we'll have time too, so, we want you to have a chance to speak, but we want everyone to have a chance to speak. Let's see. We asked you to use the microphone up here, I don't like talking in this microphone anymore than you guys, but we do have someone that's videotaping, and that will have their sound, so that those that didn't meet here tonight can see what went on. How sure it just walked in, so you all have to be here. Let's see, you're, you're allowed to speak on anything that's important to you, whether that be a praise report, or something that's still not good, that you just want to tell the group about, you know, something, ideas or things that we could do better in the school system, then tell us about that, if there's anything that's not going right, you know, let us know that. When you are speaking, we ask that you, you know, take your good manners, you know, we're Cleveland County folks, we know what good manners are, you know, we want to keep things civil, and if you're referring to a particular school employee, if you could use their position rather than your name, you know, that would be a little less, I guess you'd say accusatory, you know, if you've got something to turn out, and they've got names, we'll send that on to the school board if you want to name names, but, you know, instead of saying, "That board member, Donnie Furman, he's just this," you could just say, "A certain school board member said this," or something, you know, but we'll try to be nice to Donnie tonight, so, I will recognize that we do have two board members here tonight, Donnie Furman and Danny Blant, and we're glad they're here. And while we're on that, I did send an email invitation to the entire board, superintendent, assistant superintendents, and a few of the, I guess you'd say, upper staff. Probably about half responded, said they couldn't be here for whatever reason, you know, they're half, I did not get responses from, so you can take that however you'd like. We may at the end, depending on the things that we discuss, I may have some questions to throw out to you, kind of, survey-type questions, just to see what you think, that we can pass on to the school board, and at the end, if either one of you guys would like to make comment or address their form, you've got four minutes too, so we'll, we'll turn the red circle on you too, you'll have the same opportunity everybody else has. Any questions about any matter? Did everybody get to sign up that wants to? We do have a few anonymous letters, and typically I don't like doing that, and a couple of us have talked about that, and I think you should be willing to stand up for what you have to say, but we do realize that some folks may not be comfortable talking and feel like there could be some retaliation taken for speaking their mind, and so that's, and we've heard that firsthand at our last town hall meeting, so that's the only reason I agreed to read these letters, there's four or five there, I'll turn the timer on, and I'll read the letter, if it takes more than four minutes, I'll stop reading that letter at that point, so it'd be just like a person speaking, we give the whole letter in fine, if not, I'll stop at four minutes. If you want to hear the rest, I'll keep going, but this is, I guess, government, I don't want to say that, U.S. citizens read at his best, if there's something we need to discuss, we'll take a vote, we'll discuss, you know, majority rule, if we have a question about how to proceed on something, or, you know, whatnot, we'll, we'll take a show of hands and majority rules, and we'll do whatever the majority wants to do. It's, it's not my meeting, it's the public's meeting, is that fair enough for everybody? You guys are good. Let's see, the, the first speaker is Nelson Borst.
Well, I didn't realize when I signed that that I was expecting, I thought it was a brother. I don't mind.
It was a nomination sheet, actually.
But I just, firstly, I love my school, and you know, there are some things that didn't improve, but I really like my school, and that's why I'm here, I'm not a parent, you know, I don't have any kids, and I graduated eighteen years ago, so, or seventeen years ago, so, I'm just here for my love of my school.
Very good, very good, thank you. So you got a great half-minute, you have a chance to start. The next speaker is June Holtzler.
And I'm like Nelson, I thought that thing was a real problem, you know, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm like Nelson, I graduated in nineteen ninety, I don't have any kids in school, but I feel like all the kids that go to my school, especially in one of my athletes, and I know we have a lot of problems in our school, and I'm here for, I want to fix some of these problems, and I would like us to be vulnerable again, I want, I want us to be family, you know, we used to be family, and I don't think we're family anymore, that's why, that's what I'm here for, and that's what I have to say.
Is there anything specific you want to share?
No.
Okay. You're a white boy.
That's me, can I sit back here, that would make me feel more comfortable.
Can you pick it up on the chair?
I'll kind of, I'm not a fabulous speaker, so I'll just put that out there right now. All right, well, I just want to say thanks for letting us have a chance to be vulnerable, and shout out for what, what our needs are, and one of my things that I've researched and looked into is representation on the board, and all board members know this, because they've all read letters from me, and superintendent as well, and I teach preschool, so we do vehicles, so, so here's a little map of this area, it's well-worn, as you can see that we use it at preschool, but if you look, this is the Burns area. That's us, we're big, and this is our representation. So, I guess what I'm looking for is representation for our area. So you can tell I'm not a, I do kids, I'm no one that's here, I'm nervous, but, Roger here too, is not here, lives in the Burns zone, but as you know, he was a Crest principal for a long time, and all his children went to Crest, and not that you can't cross lines, you know, that, you can do that, but if, if you live up here, you know our needs better, if, you know, I've seen school board members in our limits, or athletics, or different things, so if you, if we could have representation up here, I think that that would be helpful, and most counties do it that way, yes. I did some research with a set to the board, of all hundred counties and North Carolina, and of course, some of your rural counties don't have a lot of people, so they don't district, but the progressive cities, they're divided into districts, we're divided into zones, we do everything by zones, whether we dismiss by zones, or feeder school by zone, so we should have zone representation, it just makes sense, and then, we always have somebody to go to on our board for representation. And I feel like, you know, some of our needs in this area are very, very different than the needs in Kings Mountain, or Shelby, or even Crest, I think we're similar to Crest, more so than the other two groups, but, you know, we don't have the same needs established. My countdown is on, one other thing that I made note of, besides representation on our board, was that we've had a problem with athletics up here, and we had several students, from my understanding, that transferred, and, you know, that was their family's choice, they had to get through the board, and the, the, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association recommends that a student sits for three hundred and sixty-five days when they transfer to a school, so, they, it is, if they transfer based on academic needs, if they take that time to sit and not play sports, then the academics can become their top priority, and so, if that was what, how our, what our board chose to do, and that is the recommendation, you know, it might be interesting to see who transferred if they would have to sit for a year. So, that is the other thing, there's other needs up here, but we're great people up here, and we've got great teachers, and great staff, and great kids, and we want people to hear us, so, yes.
Is anyone else, that some of the folks that just came in, are you here to speak, or just let anyone come to speak?
I'm not really sure what the means is about, I'm the one that came in late, so, I just got this email from a Thomas Jefferson parent, so I would say that the Burns parents aren't necessarily notified, I found this out from a friend of a friend of a friend, and they don't even have kids in the Burns district, so...
It's, it's a simple town hall meeting, where community can speak out on anything with the Cleveland County school system.
Well, the email was worded as something that happened recently in a Burns event, is how it was worded, so I'm thinking something happened at my kid's school, and I don't know what happens.
We're sending a clipboard back to, so that I don't have to read all of these at one time, I think I'll read every speaker and read one of the anonymous letters, and that way, there we go, say my voice. Before I do that, I'll take privilege as moderator, I appreciate what you said about representation on the board, and I've discussed that with, with several folks. Now, don't shoot the messenger, but I want to challenge you, there's an election next year, and there's five seats up, if you guys don't see any more of that line, you're not going to get any more representation. Is that, is that a fair statement, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to stir up anybody's feelings, but it's just that simple, you're gonna have to, you guys, the Burns zone needs to have some folks running for school board.
Can I say something on that? When we look, okay, when you look the map of our area, we represent a quarter of the students in North Carolina, in Cleveland County, but there's more people in Kings Mountain, so how others counties do it is they put people, like you would vote in your area, and you would vote, there's no way, I've added all the populations from Cape Cod, from Delton, and Austin together, there's no way that number can mount, can top a Kings Mountain vote, so it has to be set up in a way that is made it fair, and you would run through your zone.
Well, the way I look at it, there, there's nine board seats, there's four zones, so you have to take from each zone and mine watch, that's as, as simple as I can make it.
Actually, they'd like that for merger, it would make sense, but it didn't.
But if you look at the graphics on the votes, there's only about ten percent, ten, twelve percent of people voted for a school board last year, so if Burns would have turned out, they could have elected all.
Every one, if they would have, if they would have, can. Before we get too far down that rabbit hole, I did have that as one of the questions to ask at the end, and we may discuss more at the end.
I don't want to get lost.
Okay.
So, my understanding is that's an election issue, that's not a school board issue, the school board can't determine, oh, well, let's just put it up into four zones, that's an election issue, that's not, we're not gonna solve that, that's not, the school board has no say in that matter.
Actually, it's a board policy, I've got an example of a county that changed their board policy because of that.
And if we need to stay level with board charter, that, that's, I think that's where it comes from, we would have to, Tim Lord, Tim Hastings, that group, and have them change the board charter. Okay. This is our first anonymous letter, and it says, "Untitled." Now, please remember, these are not, I, I haven't read any of these yet, so I don't know what they're gonna say, I'm gonna try to be edit as it go along, and I may or may not agree with you, so, don't attribute it to me. As I write this letter, I feel as usual, nothing will be done, things will continue as they are, like they have been for the past few years. Burns High School has no leadership, everything we do has to be approved from downtown first. We are falling apart from market support, and heads are being turned the other way. If we do something wrong or disagree, that too is reported, so where do we turn? As you can tell by now, I'm, I am, I am an employee of Burns High School, I feel like I have to take this step for, have to take this step for fear of losing my job if I stick out. Old hits, I, I would be told to go home because I disagree with the principal. Only his opinion counts, Burns High School has never been this low, and we may never recover, something is not done to stop this. We have been down before, and, and we thought we'd ever come back, but this is a different kind of level. Teachers are not happy, but won't speak up, students aren't happy, but not sure what to do, that nobody cares, so what do we do? I pride myself on being a part of a wonderful family in Burns High School, but right now, I don't even want to come to school in the mornings, but I'll say it again, what can we do, who cares, nobody evidently, because the parents are complaining, and students are talking, and nobody listens. Does that Burns High School go completely under, or is, or is someone going to take control and do something about this before it's too late? We need help now, we need new leaders, we need someone who will listen to us and make us believe in them, because we know they can. We lost twenty-three teachers and staff, are we going to continue this pace before we get help at Burns High School, or do we wait till we go under? The whole community is laughing and thinks we all are just country kids now, we sure are proving them wrong. Nobody attends sports events, what does that say? Our football stadium used to be full of people, even standing up because of those things, not anymore. Maybe we get some help before it's too late, just saying, someone who cares more than anyone knows, so that's...
Those are some pretty valid points to look up and think.
Our next speaker is Robert Queen.
I've got a little crap to help, I'm standing right here.
Well, Ms. Robert, take the microphone, come on up, there's a yard.
I'm Robert Queen, I'm from Fallston, I went, I graduated from Burns High School in nineteen sixty-five, when there were two Burns High Schools, and one in Fallston and one in Coquill. I remember when they built a new Burns, I remember the gym roof caved in in an ice storm. I know that Burns is kind of the reddited stepchild in Cleveland County, they don't have a lot of torment, we had a lot of torment, Burns and Fallston, it was where I started at school, at Fallston, and the first grade, and graduated there, the same school, went to build a couple of years during the merger we had back then. I took, I go to all the school board meetings, I pay attention, I write about my citizensforgoodgovernment.com, I have a prepared statement that I turn over to Robert, and talk about something else. The statement was made just a minute ago, that we have no represent, representation on the school board, the statement I mean, sitting down, is we need people to run for the school board from this area, and we need to vote for them, we need to vote for them. I don't believe that this is a own thing, because I've seen it, it comes up, it's come up with county commissioners a number of times, it always gets voted out, it's not gonna happen. If we, if Burns area wants representation, people who live in the Burns area has to run for office, and people that, in Cleveland County, especially in the Burns area, has to vote for them, and get elected. If we don't do that, you'll always be like the hard at that, it will not happen unless people run, and people get elected. And talking about elections, this school board election is next year, we can elect five next year, the school board can be completely changed next year, and it's up to people to run, and get elected, and make the changes that all of us want, and while we're talking about elections, we've got an election this year too, and I see two candidates here, a sheriff, and a candidate for district attorney, John Bridges, Alan Holmes, we need to vote for these people, they're out here seeing what, what, what problems people have, we need to vote for people like that, we need to look around and see the people that are not here, remember, maybe we don't necessarily need to vote for those, we need to vote for the people who come out and hear what problems are in the, in the neighborhood. So that's, that's the polit, that's the politics of the situation, it's all in our hands. On November first, Tuesday, after the first Monday, is election day, and that's where we all need to be, at the, at the ballot box, voting for our candidates, and we need to encourage people to run, Ms. Riley, I hope you run, I hope Robert Queen, I hope up in here tonight, run for office, and let me tell you, I'll vote for you. I vote every time, I've never missed a election in my whole life, and I'm getting pretty old, I don't intend to ever miss one until I can't go anymore. And I hope everybody in here becomes politically accurate, look at the candidates, run for office, if you want to make a change, maybe I'll run for office, I don't know what the filing fee is for school board, what is it, Danny, twenty dollars, if anybody wants to run, I'll pay the filing fee. We need to make a change, we need to take a change, we just need to turn out, and know that our candidates are, again, I see John Bridges, Alan Holmes here, these folks need to be here, Danny needs to be reelected, Donnie is working on him, I'm trying to get him to stick on that, but he's gone up next year, so we don't have to worry, we got him in place right now, all we have to do is convince him of a change we need to make, so, that's all I have to say.
This was a little bit longer, I may not be able to get through it in the four minutes, but we'll see what happens. I would like to write this anonymous letter to be read in public about our Cleveland County school system. First of all, I'm a proud employee of our school system, secondly, the only way you can ever actually hear anything from a firm employee would be through an anonymous letter, because anyone who speaks up about our school system either gets fired or punished, punished with no advancement for life, just, just for speaking up against our administration. My problem is specifically with the past and present administrators located at our central services facility. I've been an employee of the school system for many years, I've seen many unjust actions during that time, I've seen many people who have stood up for their rights and asked questions or make inquiries, mysteriously get fired a month or so after they spoke up, or they got splashed like a bug on a car windshield, and shut up and became silent, while they were slept with the iron fist of our administrators, and either moved to an unfavorable job, or placed on an empty island of no return. Our administration is corrupt, that is corrupt with a capital C, they are dishonest, they have misused Cleveland County school money for their own individual gain, time and time again, they have cheated the taxpayers of Cleveland County for many years, they have also abused employees on a daily basis. If you think that bullying with our school kids is bad, it is a non-existent to what our executive administrators do to our fine regular Cleveland County school employees. These executive administrators lie in chief and bend and break rules on a daily basis, they make their own rules and enforce them as they see fit. The saying of most internal employees is, the rules change daily, and they don't apply to everybody. How would you like to have this apply to your town? The employees have no choice but to keep quiet, take whatever punishment that the executive administrators decide apply to them, or they will have no job, equal rights that they don't have. These are the same executive administrators who misappropriated Cleveland County school money for personal gain, in substantial collective amounts, no, no huge purchases, and then spent seven days shredding documents pertaining to all their purchases, thanks to so-and-so who told them to do so. Then when they had shredded all the documents and get your hands on them, they called for a make-believe SBI investigation. This SBI investigation was run by one woman, we gave her name, who was later rumored to be a possible kin to one of the administrators. Now they wanted to vote to seal up all the rest of the documents that once it somehow didn't get shredded, and just forget about the whole matter for the rest of the interest of the people. and just forget about the whole matter for the rest of the interest of the county and the schools and the school board. Seal it up and forget it, who do these people think they're dealing with? They steal John K. Public's money, and first of all, they don't want him to know anything about it. And then once it starts coming out, they want to seal it up, go back to work, and then try to steal some more. I don't think so, not on my watch. The best interest of Cleveland County is to get rid of these things. They should be immediately fired and prosecuted and recorded law. But you see, that brings us back to seven days of massive shredded documents, and many of them are full of bags of shredded documents. I believe they have found out that they couldn't go back and shred all of the bank records on the cards, so. There's plenty of enough evidence of Mr. Mizzou's school board to fire these crooks. Why, why have you not done so? You're afraid of the scandal, you don't want it on all the TV news stations, or could it possibly have applied to someone I don't know about? Someone on the school board? I know about the seven or so heating and air conditioning units someone purchased of Cleveland County school money and installed it in personal residences. Seems like one went to a member of the school board's house, seems like another went to a retired director of the old Kings Mountain school board. So I got, I got through one head. I'm a traitor of the genuine red green.
Agree.
Anya photo. All right, picking up where we left off, um. It seems like about two years after they were, I'm gonna start another four minute time, and we'll definitely. Where did the other ones go to and return back from small world business? I believe that nine percent of all. This is where I say I'm editing along, but some things just to. Um, the school board is full of our executive administrators, because they mostly only want, only see what our administrators want them to see. It's like they make a movie especially for them, they have no exact idea of the day that goes on of our school system at our central services facility. They just get brief glimpses and relatively short encounters of the powers that be. The general public has no clue of the current and past atrocities that have been committed by these collective guilty people. They have abused and scorned John K. Public's money, they have refused to promote people that deserve promoting to promote their good old boy friends. They have lived tied off the hog by giving themselves raises, bonuses, and supplements while making sure Johnny lived back a few times for regular employees. They were busy shredding important items at all times, they could not shred all the digital bank receipts. The bank had copies of these on trace. Uh, rec, uh, receipts for prescriptions, gas, lots of gas, vehicle work, vehicle parts, personal computers, personal tablets, grills, fall visits, massages, overnight stays in hotels out of town, Christmas presents, alcohol, food, household items, et cetera. That is a whole lot of hundred dollar, two hundred dollar, three hundred dollar plus items, times many, many purchases. Maintenance was one percent of the credit card problem, the executive administrators were ninety-nine percent of the problem. It's kind of strange that we offer about that one percent over and over, and we're yet to hear anything about the other ninety-nine percent, not silenced or killed. That is what central services counts on, and a standard maintenance, on a silver fire, and will vote to just ignore everything else and walk your way to the best interest of the county. They wanted you to think the problem was way down low, when the whole time the problem was right at the top and plain sight. Those making the most money were committing a crime. They thought they were better than everybody else, they actually thought they could fully manipulate the data, they failed. This story could go on indefinitely. I'll give you nine things, school board, that you need to look into for the best interest of Cleveland County schools. Number one, I wanted the superintendent authorized an executive director of human resources and our assistant superintendent of operations, our director of financial operations, and our administrative technology person to shred many, many, many documents at our service center for seven days. Wanted the school board not question the abundant receipts that were lost when the bank reproduced many, if not all of them. One does, this particular person get a twenty-eight thousand dollar supplement, one of the highest Medicare supplement for anyone outside the school system of six thousand or less, and ninety-five percent of those are greatly less than six thousand. How can anybody in finance, they didn't sign off on all the financial reports, receipts, and bills? Everyone on the inside does, and a minimum of three people to sign off on everything. Uh, number two, where's your financial responsibility, just what is your job? Five, how do you justify the, um, director of maintenance purchasing seven residential hutts? Uh, number six, how can everybody that makes over seventy-five thousand a year in Cleveland County schools attend a particular church? I'm gonna finish those nine things, and then that's it. Number seven, how can a particular person, that will give you this, uh, it was again a question of why somebody had a, had a job. Um, number eight. Again, that gets kind of personal. Um, nine, how, how do you, as a school board, think that Cleveland County schools can even remotely think of looking for, when we are dragging all of this garbage around, this, um. Sort of excuse me, I'm a fifty-year-old school, we're young, we're American, we want so we, so we will do so. And there's some stuff. Some words that I would say personally, I don't know if I might get, so. The school board will. Uh, when, when we do the minutes, I'll refer to the anonymous letters, but they will not be included in anything that goes out in the public, so if you aren't here, you don't get it, but the school board will be given a copy. So we've got to.
Roll those blanks that you were saying there, you gotta have somebody's name there.
It was, it was somebody's name or a twenty-two R.
You hit up with the school board, the name of that particular act.
I'll give an exact copy of that letter, I'm not gonna edit it or write out, I'll give an exact copy. Some were names that I blanked out, somebody was saying the same thing over and over again, and, what'd you say, some others were? I mean, it wasn't foul language, but it was not important. Uh, so Bruce Martin's the next speaker.
I'm a boy, I'm scared to come up our side.
Speak whatever you want to say.
I'd like to say my name's Robert, and, uh, I've been around the book a long time, I guess, ever since I was about nine years old, so this is. And I wrote it down, I usually come to cook from the cup, but I want to make sure I get everything in that I've started, so. I'd just like to say that I'm a proud member of the Burns community and a faculty at Burns High School. I've taught at Burns for sixteen years and been through six principals in that sixteen years. And I can say, I can honestly say that our current administration is working hard to better our school. Has it been easy? No, it hasn't, we've had lots of trouble with the Burns. But life generally isn't easy, and it's during the hard times that we learn the importance of supporting each other. Football's buried my heart, I played at Burns back in the early eighties. And nothing's better than going to the game on Friday night and winning, but we can't always win. It's during the times where we're not winning that we learn how to lose. It's much harder to do that, that's where we come together to support the school, support our coaches, support the players, and show the students how to encourage each other, rather than place the blame on somebody. Uh, we've had great success in just the last year in many programs at Burns. Our chorus and orchestra received superior ratings last spring competition. Uh, several of our athletic teams made the playoffs, and I didn't know how deep each one of them, I couldn't hear them that right off the cuff, so I didn't put that in, but several of them made the playoffs this last year. Our ROTC received multiple awards at Leadership Camp this past summer. Our students continue to work with the North Shelby students. Uh, they have become a part of us, and they go to classes and do projects. And we're going to even have the very special goat show at Burns at first of October or so for the North Shelby. Yes, I'd like to say I'm a member of the faculty at Burns High School. A school where we have had memorable service from one of our own, a memorial, excuse me, a mortal service for one of our own this summer, when we leave the doctor, and we finished them afterwards. A school where thousands of cards were written and sent to a young man who was dying because he loved to look at cards. A school made up of a faculty that is like a family, and they come together to meet the needs of whoever. A school where I've heard the administration say time and time before making a decision, how would that, or how would I want it done if my, if that were my child? Yes, I'm blessed to be a teacher at Burns High School.
Just be another anonymous letter, um. There are ongoing issues with the Crest Middle, and how Crest Middle, Crest High School athletic departments must be addressed and resolved, issues are as follows. There are multiple freshmen at Crest High for taking in baseball PE workouts. The only way to be eligible for these workouts would be to have played on a Crest High baseball team last year, either of our senior JV. If you did, then you were given the option to sign up for these baseball workouts to take place of their scheduled PE class. How could freshmen possibly be eligible to attend these baseball workouts? Would these freshmen's schedules intentionally change so their PE would align with these workouts? More than a week, where these workouts offered to all students, or are some being given special treatment while others are being discriminated against? Second thing, throughout the past six years at Crest Middle, there have been thousands of dollars raised each year by the baseball team and their families. There have been minimal evidence of any of that money being put towards the program. We as parents had to fund some of the players' uniforms and were constantly supplying the concession stand with donations. There are several, if not more, thousands of dollars unaccounted for. With the mental people having access to these funds, it should not take too much investigating to determine where it all ends. Third item, how is it determined as to whom is allowed to use the Crest High baseball facility? It is always kept law, however, there are non-facultative people that have their own key. Since when do non-facultative members have their own key and access to a facility funded by taxpayer dollars? Whether this unauthorized use not only upsets the school up to potential injury lawsuits, but also increases electricity use, costs of the school, and the taxpayers more. Again, special treatment being offered to some that is not offered everywhere. I'm trusting you, I'm sending this to address to you. Uh, I'm trusting you to protect the rights of our children and put an end to the discrimination and favoritism. This letter will remain anonymous due to the fear of retaliation by frustrated teachers concerned.
They, it's cool that we have a standing knee in the nation, and I brought them here, and I've done turn, this two letter voted to offer picture of our president.
And the next speaker is Ken Yada Bodens, did I say that right?